So guys, we are going to finish up tonight the overview training. So I thought that's kind of fitting because we've been working on it for three months and this will kind of round out my last night and then your overview. Then we're going to pass it on to George. I've already set him up with a training session in the queue, so he'll provide the same quality. Hopefully.
Same content, not quality, but the content will be there.
No, he'll be good, he'll be good. So we're gonna go, we're gonna start where we picked off last, we left off last time. But as we move to these slides, if there's any questions about any of the work that we previously talked about, just stop me and let me know and we can go back to it. So we talked about what is zoning and what is the comprehensive plan, the components of a comprehensive plan and your zoning code, what gives zoning boards the authority to make decisions on variances and interpretations. We talked about the overall role of the zoning board and what functions you're required to perform, what it takes for an individual to appear before the zoning board of appeals, potential applications, what you have to look at when you're doing an interpretation of the zoning code. We talked about the area variance test. Now, just real quick, which one is not a factor in the area variance test? Whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, whether the benefit sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance, whether the requested variance is substantial, the alleged hardship relating to the property is unique, and whether the variance would have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Remember, this is area variance test, which is not a factor. We got it. It is the uniqueness. Uniqueness is a factor for the use variance, but not a factor for area variance. I should have given the candies out as we went.
No, that's who I trained my dog.
I was afraid you were gonna take it back.
No, no, those are yours.
Reverse. Yeah, if you get them wrong, you have to give one back.
Now, we've talked about this one every time, but just to show off your smarts, which factor is missing? Five-factor area variance test, we know uniqueness is not a factor, but which one's missing?
Our favorite one.
Self-created, there we go. All right, so then we ran through the variances, the area variance test. Then we talked about the use variance. So for a use variance test, how many parts of the four-part test do you have to pass? Is it all four, a majority, it's not passing, it's balancing, it's a number established by the municipality?
Three.
We're showing off here.
Oh, sorry.
Use variance, remember use variance, use variance test.
Oh, use.
Use.
One, oh, four, please, one more.
Elaine blew it out of the water right away. She didn't have to glance at the slide. It is all four. Remember, area variance is the balancing test, use variance is a mandatory four-part test. You have to meet all four standards. So we talked about that. We talked about use variance tests focusing on your return on investment and having to demonstrate with dollars and cents proof. And we talked a little bit about what dollars and cents proof means. I won't go back through that. We talked about illustrations of financial evidence. We talked about that uniqueness. Well, uniqueness is not a factor for the area variance test, it is a factor for the use variance test. We talked about unique circumstances and some examples. And this is where we left off. So we are in the middle of going through the use variance tests. We talked about dollars and cents proofs and financial hardship. We went on to uniqueness. Now we're at character of the neighborhood. So remember that you have to consider the character of the neighborhood when you're looking at use variance. And what are some factors that would illustrate character of the neighborhood? Well, you're gonna look at your observations of the neighborhood when you guys do your drive-bys. That's why it's so important both for area variances and use variances. You want to consider the expected effect of a proposal on the neighborhood. Is it going to change parking patterns, noise levels, lighting, traffic? So you want to consider whether the use requested would be compatible with the surrounding uses. So for example, is it going to create any safety hazards? Does it involve storage of toxic chemicals or blockage of roads during service deliveries? We don't really get anything to that caliber, but a lot of times it's, will this second-story addition block the neighbor's lighting affecting the neighboring garden? That's been one that we had to deal with not so long ago.
But that wasn't a use variance.
No, that was area variance. But the evaluation for that standard at the area variance level and the use variance level is the same. That factor carries over in both tests. In area variance, it's just part of the overall balance. For use variance, it is mandatory that it will not have an impact on the community character. So diving into self-created, again, this is another one that's going to be part of the area variance and the use variance test. So with respect to use variances, an applicant for a use variance must prove that the hardship the property suffers was not created by the owner. A common hardship that is claimed is that the applicant did not know that what it was doing on the property was not allowed by zoning. However, we talk about this pretty frequently, that it's no excuse to say you didn't know. Ignorance of the law is never an excuse that would apply in any situation when you're talking about area variances and use variances. Property owners are bound by zoning restrictions even if they're not aware of those zoning restrictions. You have a responsibility to go and look at your municipal zoning code, you can talk to the building inspector, you need to figure out what you're allowed to do on the property. So an applicant who buys a property is presumed to know whether his or her intended use of that property is allowed by the zoning regulations. If it's not allowed, the applicant is essentially creating his or her own hardship when the property is acquired. The ZBA must deny that applicants requested relief in that case when it comes to a use variance request. The potential purchaser of the property, acting as a contract vendor, for example, would be wise to apply for a variance before the property changes hands. That way, if you don't get your variance, you're not out of luck. Sometimes hardship is created by an action of the property owner after they purchase the property, which might not be a self-created hardship. For example, a couple purchases residential property with a large room above the detached garage, spends large sums of money converting the room into a dance studio, and finds out they cannot operate legally when the zoning enforcement officer finds out about the studio and issues them a citation. If they apply for a use variance, they cannot use the cost of renovation in their hardship argument because the cost would be self-created. So they'd be out of luck. That is, there's no way around it. One of the examples that comes up about what is unacceptable, what is not self-created is an example where they purchased the property and they wanted to build, I'm forgetting what it was, but some commercial use, and they realized that the soil wasn't going to allow them to build what they had proposed. And there actually wasn't anything else they could do on the property because of the soil. So they had to request a use variance to allow something else. And I should say, they weren't allowed to use the property in any way permitted by the code because of the soil. And it was in some sort of industrial, commercial district and they had to then build residential. And they said that was not self-created. Now, George, later on in the year, I've already advised him that this is a hot topic for this board and that he should pay attention to any case law that's coming out about self-created hardships to create a better idea of what is self-created and what's not self-created. The courts don't really like to talk about it. They try not to evaluate self-created, but George will find something good.
It's almost like they should change the law.
Yeah. That would be helpful, exactly. It's like, why bother even applying for a use variance? Self-created is such a, it's an obstacle all the time. So moving on, general municipal law section 239M requires zoning board of appeals to refer applications to, oh, sorry, this is a multiple choice question. Phew, I'm off my game. Okay. General municipal law section 239M requires zoning board of appeals to refer applications to which of these entities?
239M. What is that law?
Well, it's a good question because knowing what that law is, is the answer. This one is the county or regional planning agency. That's what 239M requires you to do. So it's intended to bring inter-community and county-wide planning and zoning considerations to the attention of neighboring municipalities. It requires local boards to refer certain types of land use actions to the county planning agency if the subject properties of the applications are within 500 feet of certain areas. A written agreement between the municipal board and the county planning agency can list types of applications that do not have to be referred to the county. So we are actually in an exempt community. So this form that you see on your screen, which is really tiny, is what actually gets referred. So Amanda looks up whether the application is located within 500 feet of a state road, county road, state property, county property, municipal boundary, or a farm operation. Those are the triggers, the 500 feet triggers. Now, sometimes you're like, how do we know? Dutchess County is great, and they have a website where you type in the address and it's color-coded. And based on the color codes, you know whether or not it has to get referred, and that gets taken care of by Amanda and the building department. So we don't even have to deal with it or see it, but it's this form that goes.
So they could return that or return comments to us?
Exactly. So once this goes out, you have 30 days. You have to wait 30 days before you can make a decision. If the 30 days passes and you didn't receive anything back from the county, you're free to move forward. But the county's pretty good, they'll get this form back, and usually it's a matter of local concern. But sometimes it's local concern with comments, sometimes it's a denial. If it's denial, if it's a denial, then you have to do, it has to be approved by a supermajority, and you have to go back to the county with your override resolution.
Interesting.
Within seven days.
Yeah. So we don't really deal with that. If any of the issues we're dealing with go to the county, it's usually a matter of local concern. And again, that gets handled at Amanda's, by Amanda. So, thanks Amanda. But the planning board, this really go, if you ever leave the zoning board and go to the planning board, this issue and making sure that this form is properly referred and making sure you're getting the county comments back is more of an issue for the zoning board. In fact, 239 review is not required for area variances concerning residential properties, which is why we really never talk about it. But I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware, and also if you ever leave and go to the planning board, now you like know what the GML, and it's not usually, you just say like GML referral, and that's what this is referring to. So there's another section under general municipal law, section 239-N, which requires that notice of special use permit applications and application for use variances for properties within 500 feet of a municipal boundary are sent by regular mail or electronic mail to the clerk of the adjacent municipality at least 10 days before the public hearing. Again, we don't get many use variances, and so you have to have two factors for it to be triggered for this group. It would have to be use variance and located within 500 feet of a municipal boundary. Now, conditions of approval. This is something we deal with occasionally where we talk about whether or not a condition is appropriate to add on to the resolution. Statutes empower the zoning board when granting a use or area variance to impose reasonable conditions and restrictions directly related to and incidental to the proposed use of the property. Conditions are meant to mitigate the impacts of the approved project on both the neighborhood and the integrity of the zoning law. You can't just add a condition that's not connected with the project, right? It has to, the purpose has to be to mitigate some sort of impact you anticipate, and it has to pertain to the property and not to the user. So some acceptable conditions might be focused on traffic control, lighting, landscaping, requiring fencing. These are some very common conditions that we'll see. But some improper conditions would be dedication of off-site land. It would be improper to condition a variance on the dedication of land not part of the It's also not proper to condition a variance on the removal of a non-conforming operation on a different parcel. You have to focus on the property that's in front of you. You cannot make any conditions regulating the detail of the business. An extreme example of this is limiting the variance to the current operator or owner of the business. There was a case from the Supreme Court in 1988 where the court, I'm sorry, not the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals, where the Court of Appeals struck down a condition placed on the grant of a use variance for a real estate office that restricted the variance to use only by the then-current owner. Again, these variances run with the land, you have to keep that in mind when you're approving it. You can't say, well, it's okay for this property because, well, this structure's going to be used by their, you know, relative or their mother-in-law, but after that, no more. Like, it has to be taken down. It doesn't work like that. So you're granting a variance knowing it's going to go on forever and ever. Are there any other conditions to mitigate what your concerns are? Hours of operation. Another improper condition would be one that limited the hours of operation of a business on the property. Limiting the hours of operation through zoning is tantamount to regulating the details of the business. It's like the same thing. This could instead be addressed through enactment of a local law regulating similar businesses.
I feel like you got in the weeds in that with the flower shop then, if I remember, we were like talking about hours of operation, or maybe we were talking about that and you said, no.
Yeah. That's probably, again, you know, and there's some that teeter on the line of, is it appropriate? Is it not appropriate? And you have to really focus on, well, what is your concern? What are you trying to mitigate by imposing that condition? Now, if you impose a condition and the current property owner is fine with it, and they say, okay, well, their options are to either in the future, well, they can't argue in the future because, again, you have to, your Article 78s have very short statute limitations, right? That 30 days to challenge that the condition was inappropriate. So if they don't challenge, in the future, what they could do is come back to this board and seek an amendment to the resolution to remove the condition. So it can be reevaluated in the future. I've also had cases where, in other municipalities, where the board years ago put a condition that was, that said that the accessory dwelling unit could only be used by family members. So now the property is being sold, you know, 20 years later, and they said, you know, this condition's not legal. What can we do? And so, you know, we prepared, we evaluated the situation and wrote a memo to the zoning board saying, this condition has to be dropped without them seeking an amendment to the resolution because the condition was illegal based on case law. So I guess that's another way to get it removed, is talk to the attorney and argue it should be there in the first place. So something we have had, so any questions on conditions? So something we've talked a little bit about, but not too much, we've had separate trainings on this, this is just gonna give you a little taste, of the State Environmental Quality Review Act. So zoning board of appeals, mostly the applications that you're dealing with are area variances for side yards, real yards, or area variances pertaining to single-family or two-family homes. Those are all designated type II actions, which is why we don't really go into SEACER. Type II actions do not require any environmental review. If a variance request is not on the type II list, because SEACER has a type, just a list of type II actions, the SEACER process must continue. The lead agency, or the agency that's going to take responsibility for the environmental review, must either issue a negative declaration, which finds that the project will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, or they issue a positive declaration, which finds that the project may have one or more significant adverse effects on the environment. If an agency issues a positive declaration, an environmental impact statement must be prepared prior to the zoning board's ruling on the application. Now, once you issue that POSDEC, there are many requirements. It starts with a scoping period, which creates a outline of what's going to be in the environmental impact statement. Then they do a draft environmental impact statement, there's a public hearing, then there is the final environmental impact statement and a finding statement. So that process can go on for a year or more. I just finished one that went on for two and a half years. Very exhausting. And they produce really big, thick binders of environmental impact statements. So not something that this, that this board has ever seen, I think, I don't think we've ever seen an environmental impact statement. Jordan, you've been here longer than I have.
Uh, no.
No. And most of the time, the planning board, they might do a thorough environment, you know, require a bigger environmental assessment form or ask for specific studies, but I don't know if the planning board has gone into an environmental impact statement either. It's a long process.
Didn't they have that with Prophecy?
What?
Didn't they do that with Prophecy? Prophecy Theater?
I don't think, I don't think they have issued, Bruce.
They didn't issue anything yet on that.
Yeah.
They're still letting the applicant try to mitigate the issues to possibly get to a negative declaration.
Got it.
So they have that, but apparently it sounds like it's been in front of the board for like 18 months now.
Yeah. 18 months, and they haven't even issued the neg-dec or the POSDEC.
Yeah.
And when you do the positive declaration, it's not going to be, it's going to be specifically focused on where do you think there might be potential environmental impacts? Is it focused on noise? Like, for the Prophecy Theater, maybe it's just noise and traffic.
Yep.
You know, it's not gonna be about, it doesn't always have to include like wetlands and tree removal. It depends on the project and what are your environmental concerns. So I guess there is potential that it could go to environmental impact statement. Only time will tell. So agencies with land use review authority, including zoning board of appeals, must consider SEACER when reviewing some appeals and applications. This includes, like I said, the planning board especially and the city council. Their actions are also subject to SEACER review. The purpose is to consider environmental implications of proposed projects before making decisions and to properly evaluate where the areas of concern are and what are some potential mitigation possibilities. Again, we talked, I just mentioned previously about how interpretations in all area variances involving one, two, and three family residences are type II actions. Also, area variance applications seeking relief from setback and lot line requirements are also type II. So type II actions are presumed to have no adverse environmental impacts and therefore are not subject to review. When dealing with variances for commercial properties, that's where this board would probably have to step up and do some sort of review and environmental assessment form and make a decision on a POSDEC or a neg-dec. But we haven't had one of those in quite some time. Every application always has an environmental assessment form, but again, that is only part of SEACER if it's not a type II action. It's just kind of our, part of our standard application. Any questions on SEACER? So here's a quick, just kind of chart. It shows you how initially, when you look at it, you're like, oh, SEACER's complicated. But when you lay it out and you really look at it, it's very procedural. And as long as you're following the right steps and the right timeframes, it's really governed by statute, and you just have to make sure you're following along and doing it the right way. Our office is very trained in SEACER, in the SEACER process, so you're in good hands. So aggrieved applicants that are unhappy with a zoning board decision may request a hearing with the zoning board. They can appeal the decision to the town board or the city council, appeal the decision to the state supreme court, or they could potentially request a rehearing or appeal the decision to court. There's lots of, lots of options, but I just want to dive into judicial review of land use decisions.
I thought you were quizzing us on that one.
I moved past it.
Is it three or four? I think it's three.
Um, it's actually, it's actually four.
Hmm.
Yeah, but you can only request a rehearing upon a unanimous vote.
Section 78, Article 78.
Yeah, that's going to Supreme Court.
So is number three is? Even if they also can appeal to us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it can be done under both circumstances, but like Drew said, has to be unanimous decision of the zoning board to say, we're gonna rehear this.
Right.
The more common thing is probably the Article 78 and go straight to Supreme Court.
Is the applicant the only person who can do an Article 78?
No. Anyone aggrieved can do an Article 78. You'll have to prove standing, which I think we did a training session on standing and what gets you there. You have to have, you have to show that you don't, you have, you're aggrieved in a way that's not, that not everyone in the community is, that you have some sort of specific impact. Either you're like a direct neighbor or, you know, your drinking water is going to be affected directly. So something more specific than just, you know, oh, I'm gonna have to sit in traffic on my way to work, you know? So anybody can appeal, but you'll have to prove standing. So judicial review of land use decisions. So courts defer to local land use decisions, particularly those of local legislatures declaring that those decisions are given a presumption of constitutionality and correctness. The effect of this is to place a heavy burden of proof on those who challenge such decisions to show that they are unreasonable. The courts will not approve a conclusion or decision for which no evidence appears on the record. The court can consider whether the decisions are arbitrary and capricious or not supported by substantial evidence. These words have special legal meaning. So arbitrary and capricious means the decision is not reasonably related to the facts of the case. Substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable person would accept as enough to support the agency's decision. When reviewing a decision, the courts will limit their review to ascertain whether the determination has a rational basis and is supported by substantial evidence. A zoning board of appeals may not premise a decision on community opposition. We've talked about this plenty of times. You have to base it on a factual statement. A mere general statement is not going to support your ultimate finding. So if someone comes in here and says, stop this project, this project is bad for the community. I don't care if there's 100 people saying it's bad for the community. That is general community opposition. There is nothing factual. But if they say, you know, I, there's already, you know, an absurd amount of traffic, I drive to work every day and I see it and it takes me 20 minutes to get down the street. Well, now we're starting to build up on, on facts of what's really going on. Or with water, you know, I'm a next-door neighbor, there is a major water issue. You should not allow them to have additional impervious coverage, we're concerned about the water impacts. So now we're, again, focusing on the facts, that's what's key. The Court of Appeals has clearly held that generalized community opposition in the absence of substantial evidence cannot constitute support for the denial of an application. A determination will not be considered to be rational and will be invalidated if it is solely based on subjective considerations such as general community opposition or if it lacks objective factual basis. So the courts have just repeated that standard over and over. There must be evidence in the record to support the board's decision. There must be evidence in the record to support the board's decision. And the decision itself must be supported by findings that constitute substantial evidence. Findings of fact and/or testimony must be placed on the record, which adequately to support the decision. It is no exaggeration to say that everything a board of appeals decides is a potential lawsuit. That is why we go in-depth with our discussions about the five factors. You know, it's not just yes or no, it's why. We always add the why. And oftentimes, we're not getting a lot of commenters at these boards, but it's still important to build a record, and making, making sure that, you know, this board's decision is supported by facts and evidence in the record. And, you know, at the end of the day, it comes down to videos, and minutes, and the resolution. So, that's why we have these discussions, and you guys are doing a great job with, with going through those factors, so keep it up. And I think that is it. So this PowerPoint was long, but it gives you a, a kind of a taste of all the subjects. Now, I gave George the list that we talked about in January, about what were some of the trainings you hope to see later on in the year. He has that list, um, you know, and he'll pull from bits and pieces of this PowerPoint as well, so he'll take care of you from here.
Thank you, Drew.
You're very welcome, guys. It's been my biggest pleasure to work with you all.
It's our pleasure.
I was just getting used to it.
I know. I'm so sorry.
It was the second meeting.
All right, so, uh, I think we have some housekeeping items, um, so Drew, or anyone. Um, agenda item number one, is that being, uh, adjourned, I heard?
Yes, so agenda item, item number one is being adjourned. Just to clarify, it is not an accessory dwelling unit. Um, it is simply converting an existing accessory structure into a single-family dwelling. So it's not subject to the standards set forth in, um, gonna cite this, remember, two twenty-three, two, twenty-three, twenty-three F? Is it twenty-three F? The, the new accessory dwelling law in the code. It's going to be subject to standards applicable to a regular single-family house. So, there, the only change is in the parking variance necessary. It's actually for three parking spots, rather than for, um, two?
Five.
Well, it's for a total of six, and they're providing three, so the variance itself is for three.
Oh, that's right, because now it's an independent.
Exactly.
Home, so it does.
Before it was five overall, now it's six overall.
Well, let, let me, let me ask the question then, because it's a duplex home now, which would require four cars, right?
Yes.
And now they're putting in a single-family home additional, so that would be additionally two more.
Yes.
So that would be six.
Yes, exactly. So they're going to renotice and update their application materials, and they thought it best just to carry that over, and they'll talk about it next month.
Okay, so if you're, if you were here, uh, sorry.
I just, I don't know if I can ask the question now, or when it comes up next month. If this was not a two-family home, it was a single-family home, would that change?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because accessory dwelling units are not allowed in connection with two-family. So, that's why the variances are set up the way they're set up. If it was a single-family home, then this would be an accessory dwelling unit, and be an ADU. Exactly.
And then it wouldn't have the parking problem?
They'd still have a parking problem, but they'd have.
Less of a parking problem.
Less of a parking problem, so.
If it was a single-family home, no, I'm not, that's not the way I wanted to frame it, sorry. Um, is it possible for them to get an exemption from the ADU law to allow two-family homes?
No.
No?
That would, if they went that route, that'd be a use variance. So that'd be harder. So now it's.
That's why there was a use variance on this plan.
That might have been part of the confusion in what they paid. So, by saying it's a single-family house, it's not, it doesn't trigger the use variance standard, because single-family homes are allowed, as long as you grant relief from that, you know, two principal structure request. Does that make sense?
So we have to judge around its merits next month?
Yeah, and it's, it's not, you know, to think about, oh, well, we do allow, you know, accessory dwellings in the back of your head, and comparing it, that's, that's okay to do. You don't have to completely ignore that. The questions about, you know, considering that it is two-family and one, and a single-family house can be part of the discussion.
Yeah, and isn't it, isn't it the case that you're gonna always ask the question to the petitioner, is there some other way you could affect the changes you'd like to make?
Absolutely. Yep, yep. And REI is, is, uh, doing that application as well, so I know he's listening, and he'll, he'll do a great presentation next month, but I'm glad, you know, I'm here to ask these questions. I've told George about this application, so he'll be ready as well. Putting a lot of pressure on you for next month.
So anyway, if anyone's here on Five Willow Street, it is, it is adjourned to next month. Um, and then, uh, just some additional, uh, housekeeping. Uh, has everyone had the opportunity to review, uh, the minutes for the February twenty-second meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody have any comments, edits, anything? If not, could I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of February twenty-second.
And the second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, and then, I'll read my intro here. Thank you, Drew, for writing this. Good evening, uh, welcome to the March twenty-first meeting of the City of Beacon Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, my name is Jordan Haug, and I'm the chairman of the board, for now. Uh, joining us tonight are the rest of the board, except Judy, uh, our staff consultants, uh, Bruce, our building inspector, uh, one last time Drew, our city attorney, uh, and Amanda, the zoning board secretary. Um, all materials discussed tonight will be available on the city website via their links. Uh, and just to explain our procedure, um, and how this works, which actually is important tonight, uh, due to, um, things that will come out in a minute. Um, we'll hear each application in order. There's only one application remaining, uh, and for each application, we'll hear first from the applicant, um, then the board will open the floor for comments from the public. Uh, if you wish to, uh, comment, please step up to the podium, and clearly state your name and address for the record. Um, all other correspondence, written correspondence received, uh, by the zoning board secretary, will be made, uh, a part of the official record generally, uh, for the zoning board. There aren't many, so we usually read them into the record, uh, live. Uh, if there were a substantial amount, we could just add them to the record. Um, the zoning board of appeals hears and determines matters, uh, from administrative decisions. Drew has, has taught on this today, so I won't go into that. Uh, and just to go over the factors, uh, relevant to, uh, this particular, uh, application, it is an area variance. Uh, so again, um, if you are speaking as the applicant, REI, of course, you know this, and the applicant, um, but anyone from the public, if, if you could, uh, tailor your comments to any of these five factors, which would best help us, uh, determine a positive or negative, uh, declaration, uh, or, yeah. Will an undesirable change be reduced in the character of the neighborhood? Or will, or will a detriment to the nearby properties be created by granting an area variance? Will the proposed, uh, action compromise the character of the neighborhood? Is one, two? Can the benefit be sought by the applicant, be achieved by, uh, some use, some method feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the area variance? Is the area variance substantial? Will the proposed variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district? And our favorite is the alleged difficulty self-created. Um, what is important to note is, this board, you need, uh, the equivalent of a quorum to have a variance passed, so you need three votes regardless, uh, of, uh, the amount of people present here today. So Judy, uh, is not here today, so you would need, again, uh, three, uh, votes of the four. I am currently being represented by REI, uh, in front of the planning board, so I must accuse myself, uh, from this hearing and any hearing until that is, that action is no longer continued. So, uh, I'm going to appoint Montos, again, as acting chair, so you will need a unanimous decision by the remaining members of the board eligible to vote, uh, in order to, um, get the variance passed. So, uh, with that said, um, I, I would ask, I guess, the applicant if they want to proceed, uh, until, or tonight, presuming they do, that, that's fine, and, uh, Montos will take over, uh, or, in the alternative, I guess they can in theory wait until I was done in front of the planning board, uh, but.
Or they could wait for Judy to come back.
Or they could wait for Judy to come back. So, do you wish to proceed tonight?
Yeah.
Perfect. Montos, take it away.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing on agenda item? Well, I guess it's the only one, but, uh, what was distributed, agenda item number two, just to be specific, that's on seventy-six Oak Street.
Motion to open the hearing on seventy-six Oak Street.
A motion open from Elaine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Stu. Okay, all right, it's all you.
All right, give me a minute to set this up. Drew, did, did you tell George that typically the city attorney brings treats for the applicant?
Do you want some treats?
No. I'm good.
Aww. It was like a piñata.
All right. Uh, good evening, I'm REI Segal, representing the applicant, and the, the property's at seventy-six Oak Street, between Chestnut and Cedar. Um, the house and the lot are small relative to the neighborhood. The, the property's about two thousand square feet, in a neighborhood of, um, you know, five thousand square foot lot zoning. Um, and then I have up on the screen, just for context, um, where, where the house is in the neighborhood. And then this next, uh, slide shows the lot, and if you look at it in, in relation to the other lots, you know, it's, it's very small. Um, you know, a, a lot of the surrounding ones are either double, or, you know, four times as large. So, um, the owners are looking to renovate the house, so that it's more feasible for them to live there. Um, and they're requesting three area variances that would allow the house to be expanded, um, enough so that it makes sense to go through with that renovation. So the first one is, um, relief from the rear yard setback requirement. We're proposing ten feet where twenty feet is required. The second is relief from the side yard setback. Um, they, they, they just wanna follow the existing line of the house on the left side, which is nine point two feet from the property line, so, um, instead of the ten feet required. And then the third variance is, um, relief from the maximum percentage of building coverage. Um, the, the maximum allowed is thirty percent, and they're requesting thirty-seven percent. But because of the size of the lot, you know, I mean, we're, we're talking about a hundred and forty-two square foot difference, um, to, to get to that other percentage. So, um, you know, th, those are the three variances. Um, we believe that, you know, they would pass that balancing test, if, if you look at all of them. The, the house is gonna have the, essentially the same width facing the street, so it, it, it's not really creating a change in the neighborhood character.
What's the existing rear, rear yard now?
Uh, it, let me see.
Seventeen something, I couldn't quite read it.
Yeah, I think, I think it was close to.
Seventeen feet?
Seventeen point something.
Yeah, something. It's already short, it's already closer to the fence than the twenty feet.
Right, yeah. Um, and then, you know, so we, so we also looked at, you know, can, can the benefit be achieved another way? We, we, we looked at, um.
So, I'm, I'm lost. What do you mean seventeen feet? What, what's the dimensions of the new proposed structure, length and width?
Well, I mean, we're, we're adding on to, uh, a couple of places, but.
Well, you're extending the existing two-story dwelling, right?
Yeah.
To this new proposed, so what's the length and the width of the proposed?
Uh, I mean, it's about eighteen feet wide, and, and about eight feet deep, eight, eight or nine feet deep, just to get to that ten-foot mark.
Oh, okay, that's not that big, got it.
Yeah, this is, yeah, the, the property's, you know, just very small, so all those things.
Yeah.
Move it closer to the line.
Got it.
Um, but, you know, and we did look at other layout options, other, other ways to get the, the house to work, um, so, but it, it was very difficult without adding to the footprint.
Can I ask you one more question here?
Yeah.
In the, um, building coverage percentage, does the driveway play a factor in that as well?
No, that, that, that's just, anything covered with a roof.
Anything, okay, so the, the asphalt would impact that?
Right.
Okay.
Montos, what you might be thinking is impervious coverage? That would be anything covered by the roof and the driveway.
Got it. Thank you.
Oh, right, yeah, and, and this is specifically building coverage that's regulated, so. Um, yeah, so, so that's, that's pretty much the summary, that they're looking for those three variances in order to move forward with the project, and.
Question, there is no use variance here, but you pay the use fee. It says use variance five hundred dollars.
Is that at the bottom of the application?
No, no, it's on the, uh, this cover sheet. I was just wondering, because there is, it doesn't appear to be a use variance.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they paid that much.
Oh, okay.
But. We'll take a refund, we'll take a refund now if you have it.
Yeah. If you pay, you pay it back.
But, do you have any other questions for me, or?
All right, Stowe, you just referred here.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Oh, that's standard, that's.
Oh, that's the standard.
That goes, yeah, that's, that's standard, that just shows you what the options are. Yeah, I'm sorry, you should have moved earlier, I didn't.
Yeah.
So that'll be on every application.
That's gonna show up everywhere, that's fine.
So you're, you're adding seven feet back on the house?
Yeah, and, and then there's, there's also some addition over the existing one-story portion.
Right, but the footprint, the only thing that's changing is the seven feet in the back.
Right.
There was no way, since the yard is so small, and it's over the amount of coverage, there was no way to get rid of seven feet across the back?
Uh, I mean, we tried laying it out a few different ways, and, but that, that translates up to, to the, you know, the second floor, and then, you know, it was difficult to get decent bedrooms in there. I mean, it, it was sort of mainly for the second floor, and then they would get a better living room on the first floor, but, you know, we're just trying to get a reasonably laid-out house.
And if you didn't go this far back, some miraculous way of doing it, you still have to enlarge it some other way.
Yeah, and, and it.
And that might change things more.
Yeah. We're trying to stick with the, at least, you know, what, what you see from the street remains the same.
I have no other questions, though. Do you have any others?
No, I'm fine.
Elaine, you have any other questions?
No.
Okay. We'll go through the five factors.
Well, I would just ask if there's anybody in the audience who wants to speak on behalf of the application, for or against?
Okay, anybody from the audience?
No pressure, you don't have to.
Yeah, sure, just, probably. Hey, I'm Jayz Weldon, I'm the applicant. Um, so basically, I was born and raised here in Beacon, and I'm, I'm hoping to, you know, raise a family here, right in the city, so that's really why I want to, uh, make this house more livable for a family, because it is so very small, so that, uh, hopefully that's okay with you guys. Thank you.
I asked if there's anybody else, but there's nobody else on the call. Okay, should we go through the five factors?
Motion, you could do a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Seconded.
Okay, first Elaine, Stowe, second? All right, as to whether.
All in favor?
All in favor? Putting me on the spot.
I know, I'm so sorry. Montos, you're doing a great job.
I think it was the sugar that knocked me off course.
No worries. Now, hit it, five factors.
Okay, as to whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or deterrent, or to nearby properties will be created by granting the area variance. Board found that. Stowe, what's your thoughts on that?
I think the careful way that they've designed it so that, in particular, the face of the building doesn't really change, uh, means that it's likely to have a negligible impact.
I agree. It's actually. I agree. It's actually with the new driveway layout, it will actually bring the car, the cars, the way the driveway is now, they're very close to the street because the house is also, they'll be able to park further back. It'll look better than it does now.
Okay. I agree as well. I do not think an undesirable change will be produced. Okay, factor number two, as to whether the benefit the applicant seeks can be achieved through another method feasible for the applicant to pursue that does not require the variance. Stowe? Well, I guess the only option would have been maybe buying some adjacent land, but that's probably impossible in Beacon these days. So aside from that, they're constrained. Yeah.
Yeah, the lot is already, it's so small, I don't see how else they could have attained this.
Okay. I don't see it as, and I'm bleeding into the third factor, but I don't see this as anything substantial. It seems pretty minimal, what they're asking for. I don't really think there's anything else feasible. Anything else would cause additional variance requirements. Okay, as to whether the requested variance is substantial? I don't think it is relative to the neighborhood, because they're in that situation of having a tiny lot. Everyone else has larger lots, so they have larger houses. It won't seem disproportionate anymore.
Proportionate to the size of the lot, it is, and cover, and more lot coverage than is allowed. I see it as somewhat substantial, but I don't see it as a barrier.
Yeah, I think, I agree with you, and just adding on to what you said, I think, given the small size of the lot, any little addition is gonna increase that percentage number kind of drastically. But when I look at the dimensions of the addition, I don't see it as substantial. Okay, number four, as to whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or the district.
No, nothing material.
No, I don't see any impact.
I don't see any impact either. One could argue adding can, how does it affect rain, water, and things of that sort, but I, as I don't see this as substantial. I don't think it's gonna create any adverse impact to the physical or the environmental conditions. Okay. Our chairman's favorite one here is whether this is self-created or not. I don't believe so.
Yeah, I do. You knew what size the house was when you bought it.
Yeah.
That's, it's self-created.
Yeah, I have to agree. It is self-created from that regard, for sure. Okay. Drew, keep me honest in the next step now.
Yeah, no problem. There's one more question. Does the board find that the requested variances are, or are the minimum variances necessary and adequate to preserve and protect the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community?
Okay. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, you would ask if the board approves the variances requested. And I can read them, and then I'll read them, and then you guys can decide. It's that application for a 0.8 foot side yard setback variance, where the minimum required side yard setback is 10 feet pursuant to the city code, Section 223-17D, and the Schedule of Dimensional Regulations, and where the proposed side yard setback is 9.2 feet. A 10-foot rear yard setback variance, where the minimum required rear yard setback variance is 20 feet pursuant to city code, and a 7% building coverage variance, where the maximum permitted building coverage is 37% pursuant to city code, and the proposed building coverage is, I'm sorry, where the maximum building permitted coverage is 30%, and the proposed building coverage is 37%. Does the board approve or deny?
So do I have a motion to approve or deny? Aye, motion to approve. Motion-
Second.
Second, Elaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we have to say it's granted based on, oh, wait, this is the wrong thing. We don't have those conditions on this.
Nope, we do. Those conditions are here.
Would you read those conditions?
Yes, I sure can. So your variance application is approved, subject to the following conditions. No permit or certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the applicant has paid in full all application and consultant fees incurred by the city in connection with review of this application. And two, that the variances shall be void if the applicant fails to obtain a building permit within six months from the date of this resolution, fails to commence construction within six months following the date of issuance of the building permit, or fails to complete construction and obtain a certificate of occupancy within 24 months after the date of issuance of said building permit. The Zoning Board of Appeals is free to grant a six-month extension upon written request by the applicant. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. It's all approved.
You're all set?
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, thank you.
All right, that's it.
Thanks, Jordan.
Drew, good luck.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to take a minute to recognize our outgoing city attorney and just say a few words about her. I joined the board maybe a year before Drew came along, and I feel like Drew has been the rudder for our board and has provided excellent guidance and helped me grow. In my understanding of this area of law, we all, as lawyers, specialize in certain things. And I think, Drew, that you are a great teacher. And I know I joke about that often in your Dr. Drew segments, but your impact on this board will be felt, because I think you left an impression on myself and the other members in the way we look at applications. And I think that that's super important and impactful, and you will have an impact here for years to come. And I want to thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Of course. And we have some stuff to give you after. We're not being recorded. So anyway, thank you, Drew, for your service, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. You have been awesome to work with. Stowe, I know our time is short, but I know you're gonna kill it on this board, and you guys all have, do such a good job. And, you know, I'm so grateful. I don't even live in Beacon, but I'm grateful for your service. And you have made coming up here and attending these meetings just actually like a fun thing to do. I really do look forward to it.
Strange sense of fun.
[laughing]
Thank you, Drew. And I will take a motion to adjourn the March meeting of the zoning board.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're back here on a Tuesday, Tuesday next month, correct? Yes?
Yep.
Good. Perfect. Thank you.
Great.